Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Tuesday, February 5th, 2017, and ask that you please rise for brief invocation filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in our first meeting of September, we are ever mindful that, in the world that surrounds us, there are many, many places of trouble and concern. And we just ask for guidance and blessings on our world that we live in, that the cooler heads prevail and wise decision-making comes forth, and that many of the crises that are now confronting us as a state and nation can be readily resolved with just compassion and understanding and appreciation for our fellow man. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them, along with all those from our country who are serving so well with them. As always, we ask for guidance and direction and appreciation and understanding as we go forth and act on the items of business before us, and we just ask that guidance and direction be given to each alderman as they make the decisions that will affect the future of Batavia for years to come. We ask for all these blessings on our community, and we ask for Batavia to be well-served in the days ahead as we move into the fall session, season, and then later into the holiday season, which, and most of us know or all of us know, is a very special time in our community through generations of Batavians who have lived here before us. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Serrone, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, who defy of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Yur.
Here.
Serrone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
To record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present, we have obviously a vacancy, so everybody that's currently in office is here tonight, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving forward to fourth, item number five, presentation, or no, item four, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda, Alderman Atack or McFadden, do you have anything?
Well, I think tonight we've added a proclamation in honor of Suicide Prevention Week, that Alderman McFadden will leave.
Okay, and let's add that then as item 6A. Is that okay with you?
Yep. So I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark, for the approval of the agenda as amended, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file planned commission minutes for August 2nd, 2017; Committee of the Whole minutes for June 27th, July 11th, 18th, 25th, and August 15th of 2017; Historic preservation minutes for June 26th, 2017; July financials. Approvals: August 25th, 2017, payroll in the amount of $797,981.82; Accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,568,537; City council minutes from August 21st, 2017; Approval for a Class B 4 liquor license for Buchanan Energy at 2074 West Main Street; Resolution 17-95-R, approval of the First Amendment to a master service agreement by and between the City of Batavia and Suncast Corporation for the facility located at 701 North Kirk Road; Resolution 17-96-R, approval of a master service agreement for 1801 Suncast by and between the City of Batavia and Suncast; Resolution 17-98-R, authorizing change order number one to the contract for North River Street parking lot with Evans &amp; Son block topping in the amount of $22,301.84; Resolution 17-102-R, award of contract for sanitary sewer lining to a whore construction for the amount not to exceed $221,274; Approval of a Class F liquor license for Main Street's Oktoberfest and waiving the fee. I move that we approve, the consent agenda is read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Herr, for the approval of the consent agenda as read, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda, do we have anybody this evening? All right, moving then to 6A, per the consent agenda amendment, for the presentation of the Suicide Prevention Resolution, Alderman McFadden, do you have this, please?
I do, yes. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awareness around the issues of suicide prevention, it reaches how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm; and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, or background; and whereas suicide is the second highest leading cause of death among teenagers and young adults, and the highest suicide rates are middle-aged adults followed next by adults over eighty-five years old; and whereas Batavia, Illinois is no different than any other community in the nation, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, law enforcement officers, athletic coaches, parents, and all residents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another; and whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are on the front lines of a battle that many do not discuss in public; and whereas all members of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles; and whereas I encourage all residents to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the coming days, and to genuinely listen and empathize by any gesture they deem appropriate. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Batavia. Make a motion, we accept the proclamation as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of the resolution as presented, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda, do we have anybody this evening? All right, moving then to 6A, per the consent agenda amendment, for the presentation of the Suicide Prevention Resolution, Alderman McFadden, do you have this, please?
I do, yes. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awareness around the issues of suicide prevention, it reaches how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm; and whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, or background; and whereas suicide is the second highest leading cause of death among teenagers and young adults, and the highest suicide rates are middle-aged adults followed next by adults over eighty-five years old; and whereas Batavia, Illinois is no different than any other community in the nation, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, law enforcement officers, athletic coaches, parents, and all residents as partners in supporting our community in simply being available to one another; and whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are on the front lines of a battle that many do not discuss in public; and whereas all members of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all fighting our own battles; and whereas I encourage all residents to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the coming days, and to genuinely listen and empathize by any gesture they deem appropriate. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Batavia. Make a motion, we accept the proclamation as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman McFadden, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of the resolution as presented, any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to item seven, which is Resolution 17-93-R, Approval of Video Services Franchise Agreement between the City of Batavia and CMN-RUS Incorporated. Who's got this one? Alderman Atack.
I do, yes. Okay, CMS-RUS is MetroNet, and they're a video service company, and they approached the city to enter into a video service franchise agreement. They provide fiber optic communication, including high-speed fiber internet, full-featured fiber phone, fiber IPTV, and various programming, and they'd like to build a fiber optic network through Batavia. So staff worked with them to develop this agreement, and they used the Comcast agreement that we had entered into earlier as a model, and the terms include, the term of the agreement will be for ten years with options of future renewals, MetroNet will be obligated to pay a city franchise fee equal to five percent of gross revenues received from operations of the video service system. MetroNet shall provide capacity for two public educational and government-access PEG channels. There is a requirement to provide a third channel if the need is demonstrated, and at the city's sole discretion, MetroNet will be required to collect a PEG capital fee up to ninety cents per customer per month to support PEG capital projects. Are there any questions or comments? Eliot?
Just one comment, I need to abstain from items seven, eight, and nine, as I'm an employee of Comcast.
Very good. You know, I just want to make the comment that, you know, we've obviously talked about this at Committee of the Whole, and we were all sitting there. This is one of these things that kind of gets out into the town and it starts kind of a slow conversation, but it picks up momentum as you go forward. So the first few days after we had the presentation, I didn't hear anything, but, you know, now in the coffee shops and wherever I go, somebody's saying, "Well, what's with the new video company that's in Batavia, and what kind of speeds do they have, and when are they going to be here, and how much are they going to cost, and who can I talk to, where can I look them up on the web?" So we got a representative, could you come up and maybe just tell people in Batavia if you want to know something about your company, where they can, what the email address is, I guess is what I'm probably asking you.
Sure, sure, thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, my name is Kathy Scheller, I'm in External Affairs at MetroNet. We're really excited to be working with staff very closely here in Batavia, it's been almost a year and a half that we've been doing so. Both sides have done really our due diligence, and we believe that Batavia is going to be a fantastic community for us to bring our fiber optic deployment. This is very exciting because our company is going to be able to offer gigabit speeds, to answer your questions, to residents, far surpassing gigabit speeds to businesses. So at this stage of the game, and I always love this part, people can email me, and it is kathy, K-A-T-H-Y, dot Scheller, S-C-H-E-L-L-E-R, at MetroNet, M-E-T-R-O-N-E-T, Inc., I-N-C, dot com. I will make sure that appropriate staff gets all of the contact information for your residents, but again, this has been just a really great opportunity for us. We look forward to bringing competition into your community, we look forward to offering your residents choice, and I'm the person to talk to at this stage of the game, so thank you.
Also, while Kathy is up there, I just would like to point out that MetroNet was very generous to offer two fiber connections up to St. Charles, one that allows our public utilities to communicate with one another, and another one that will provide a redundant connection to TRICOM, which is really essential for emergency communications, and we really appreciate that.
Absolutely, and to echo that, we look forward to being part of the community. So we are excited about this area, we think this is a great fit for our company, and we really think it's going to be a win-win for you, as well as MetroNet, we look forward to bringing competition into Batavia.
Now, you are the, we are the first in Kane County to get this, right?
You are the first in Kane County to get this, absolutely, yes.
Because I've been asked that, if we are the first, where does it come from? I mean, you know, they're thinking you don't have any way to...
We have ways, believe me, you know, yes, so we have a lot of redundancy, and I think that that's one thing for your residents that's very important for them to know, is we really provide a lot of redundancies, so we really ring, ring, that's all construction tells me to say, we ring, we ring, and offer redundancy for everybody that uses us.
We have a lot of curiosity surrounding you, so...
Great.
Hopefully you can put it to good use.
As well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
No, just another comment, it was just on social media within the last week, people were asking about, what do I get, what are my options, and, you know, nobody really knew, but I started kind of getting out there, hey, there's something likely coming unless everybody changed their minds.
When you're the mayor, they think you know it all, so that's why I'm saying, I'm getting this thrown in my face, and I'm looking kind of dumb, because I really don't have the detail, but I keep telling them, oh, it's coming pretty quick, and now that we even have an email address they can write to, so have at it, and help yourself, ask your questions.
Will there be any public service announcements or anything like that? Sorry.
Oh, no, not at all, thank you so much. Actually, once we achieve local franchise approval, what will happen, and we've had an extensive conversation with staff regarding our communication plan, so we not only will talk about the construction communication to let your residents know what exactly is going to be happening in the public right-of-way, there'll be an opportunity for them to actually go to our website, and we will help promote that whereby they can ask any kinds of questions of us or ask about our services.
We have that on our website also?
Other communities not in Kane County have also, what they have done is they have a link that is just, you know, very there, just as public information, that they can click on, absolutely.
Right, thank you.
I mean, if we do, I mean, we certainly would have to offer it to Comcast and AT&amp;T and whoever else, you know, we have to feed everybody equally here.
That's right.
That's right.
So always have to spin that on there, because if you don't, people think, oh, you're getting connected up, and the rest of us are going to get thrown into the wind, and that's not the case.
That's not the case.
We have to let everybody have their fair share, and as I tell people, the city of Batavia can't really legislate against business, you know, if we got three gas stations and a fourth one watching the building town, unless there's some compelling reason why, you better let them do it, because it's, otherwise it's not going to be a good thing for the community, so, the more, the barrier, so. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor for the approval of...
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I think.
I thought you'd already made one, but okay.
I move that we approve Resolution 17-93-R, Approval of the Video Service Franchise Agreement between the City of Batavia and CMN-RUS Incorporated.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of Resolution 17-93-R, the Video Services Franchise Agreement with CMN-RUS Incorporated. Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Abstain.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Vote is twelve yes, one absent, and one abstention, so motions approved. Okay, moving to eight, which is Resolution 17-94-R, Approval of Poll Attachment Agreement between the City of Batavia and Metro Fiber Net. Alderman Atack, do you have that?
Yeah, I do. Okay, so that, as part of bringing the video network to Batavia, Metro Fiber Net would like to attach to our, partially attach the network to our poles, and they've worked with staff, and by using the agreement from the American Public Power Association and WOW Communications, which we had entered into before, we came up an agreement with Metro Fiber Net. And so I move that we approve Resolution 17-94-R for the poll attachment agreement between the City of Batavia and Metro Fiber Net Limited Liability Company.
Second. Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of Resolution 17-94-R, for the poll attachments.
Yeah, did I say something different?
No, I'm just double-checking myself here.
Yeah, okay.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Abstain.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Resolution 17-94-R is approved, twelve yes, one absent, and one abstention. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item nine, which is Resolution 17-101-R, Authorizing Task Order Number One with G4S, sounds like some secret government organization, to design the fiber connection from Bilter Road to the Cyrus One Data Center. Who's got this one?
I think I do, Your Honor.
Alderman O'Brien.
Well, we own a fiber optic utility, and we installed additional fibers through Fermilab to Eola Road and Ferry Road along Bilter Road at that intersection with the intention of connecting the city's fiber network to a major data center at the intersection of I-88 and Eola Road. Cyrus One LLC is the owner and operator of the data center located at the intersection. Staff has contacted G4S to help the city to design the route, obtained permits from Nycor, DuPage County, and the City of Aurora. G4S has submitted a proposal of $19,730.57 to complete this work on the Task Order One as the city has a master service agreement with G4S. In addition to design and permit fees, the city will have to pay fees to Nycor for crossing their land, and the right-of-use fee to Illinois State Highway Authority. Those fees are estimated at $18,000 and $45,504 respectively. Staff's target is to complete design in 2017, bid the construction contract in late 2017, and perform the construction in early 2018. The construction work will be budgeted in 2018. I'll make a motion, we pass Resolution 17-101-R, Approving Task Order One with G4S, Secure Integration LLC for the not-to-exceed amount of $19,730.57.
Second. Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Callahan, for the approval of Resolution 17-101-R, Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Abstain.
Yur.
Aye.
Serrone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Resolution 17-94-R is approved, twelve yes, one absent, and one abstention. Okay, moving to item 10, which is Approval Waiver of Formal Bidding for Purchase of Salt Brine Machine from Cargill De-Icing Technology in Amount of $29,514. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is for a salt brine machine that will have onsite at the public works facility so that we'll be able to produce our own salt brine to use in advance of any of the storms that come through this winter. The primary goal is preventing the bond of snow and ice to our roadways, which with using salt brine to do it with, it'll reduce the amount of granular salt that we use and should save us some money on this, and also make it a safer winter season. We've got $30,000 in the budget for this, and this unit falls within that, and we're going to ask for some feedback as we go through the season as how this works, and do we want to use this for more than just us, or how we're going to use this. I think it's a good thing that we do this, they've tried it on a test basis before, but they need a machine that can create it on demand when they need it. Any questions?
I have one, Sharon. Probably for Garrett. This machine sounds great, I mean, it's having this worth the investment, how do you measure if we're actually saving on the salt, though? Like, what's the system that the salt goes out? You're still going to be spreading the same amount, won't you?
Will you be able to cut back? So the trucks are, the trucks are calibrated, there is how many pounds you're spreading, and we track, we track salt usage throughout any given year. So once we get to the point where we'll be able to build up a database using the salt brine, which will then allow us to answer that question as to difference in salt usage, yeah, we track very closely the amount of salt that we spread for each event.
For each event, so in theory, we get a four-inch snowfall this year versus a four-inch snowfall last year.
You should be able to compare the two, right, yeah, given generally same weather conditions.
Which I wasn't sure how to measure, because when it snows, we can throw it out there.
Yeah, no, I mean, they've been...
That's a lot more scientific than the way I have.
...spread greater pounds, three hundred pounds a lane, or four hundred pounds, they actually have spread rates that they go by, so we, given the same general weather conditions and the same general snowfall, there'll be an apples-to-apples comparison.
Awesome, thank you.
Gary, I have, I had a question, will this change the color of what's being spread on the road at all? I mean, salt's pretty, looks the same as the snow, is this going to be a slightly different color, where there'll be a way that somebody will be driving, and say, oh, they've already been through here, because they can tell by the color of what the material's looking like?
So our salt, there's the granular form of the salt, and then this is the brine, so this will be a brine solution, this will be a watery-type solution, and the way they'll be able to tell this is if shortly after our application, they may see, you know, as
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving then to item eleven, which is Resolution seventeen dash ninety-nine dash R authorizing to purchase salt brine machine from Cargill De-Icing Technology for an amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. Alderman Wolf.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Wolf, second by Meitzler for the approval of Resolution seventeen ninety-nine R authorizing the purchase of the salt brine machine. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Atak.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Janzett.
Motion for approval of Resolution seventeen ninety-nine R is approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to twelve, a presentation by the Batavia Chamber. We're honored to have the executive director, Holly, here with us.
Thank you, mayor. Hello, everyone. I was trying to come up with a bunch of jokes about not snowing you or rubbing salt in your wounds or, I just didn't have time. So, I apologize for that. We have a bunch of events coming up and I do not have a business with me this evening because I wanna give you a few facts of what has happened with the chamber over the last year. It is August thirty-first was the end of our fiscal year, so I wanted to share a little bit of data with you about our membership. On Friday, September eighth, at five forty-five PM, we will be celebrating at Water Street Studios their eighth anniversary with a ribbon cutting for their wheelchair lift. This will go down in history of one of the most unique ribbon cuttings that we get to be a part of. We have the Harvest Celebration on Wednesday, September twentieth. That is a celebration of our Donna della Sassi Award winner each year and it is from a business member from our membership that displays a lot of the great characteristics of a business within our community through sharing and offering their services to others. And this year, our recipient is John Hamel from Pal Joey's and Bar Evolution. So, if you like him and what he has done and brought to our community, please come to our Harvest Celebration on Wednesday, September twentieth. That is at Marmion's Abbey Farms. We also have on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, the Fox River Luncheon and Expo, which will be held at the Center in Elgin. It is a six-chamber, multi-chamber event and we were fortunate enough to get a keynote speech from Keith Kinsey, the second and only, or the only, the second CEO of Portillo's. So, he'll be coming to talk about how he has advanced in his career. Then, the ultimate event, I want you all to take down this date. The ultimate event on the Batavia Chamber calendar for two thousand and seventeen comes up on Tuesday, October tenth. We have our esteemed city administrator, Laura Newman, coming to speak to the Batavia Women in Business. So, please join us. She's gonna talk about career changes and how to, I hope that doesn't mean she's gonna be changing her career. No, okay, sorry. How she has been able to create this awesome career for herself and hopefully inspire some other women in our business community. So, please join us at Mill Creek on Tuesday, October tenth for our Women in Business Luncheon. A couple of things that I just wanted to share about the chamber. If you don't know, just kinda give you some general stats. So, I started with the chamber in February of two thousand and fourteen, so about three and a half years ago. At that time, we had two hundred and eighty members. We have now grown to four hundred. In that time, I've made two really good decisions. One of them was to stick it out and the other one was to hire some great staff. I purely am there to support the staff at the chamber and they're the ones that help us to succeed. So, Margaret and Catherine are at the chamber offices all the time, helping our local businesses to succeed and that has been a great change for us. And that has, we've shown growth. We actually added a hundred members just in this past twelve months. Of that, we then lost thirty-seven businesses go out, they move, things like that. Some things we can't stop from happening, but we have an eighty-eight percent retention rate, which means that eighty-eight percent of our members choose to renew every year. The industry standard is about eighty-three percent and so that five percent change alone is what helps us to grow our chamber, not only from gaining new members but performing services for our business community that makes them wanna stick around and reinvest with us year over year. So, some small statistics there just so that you have a clear picture of what we do. Of course, I tell you a little bit about some of the events that we have coming up, but really, we work day to day to support the economic development of our community. So, if there's ever anything else that you think we could do to help support, please don't hesitate to let us know. But a big reason for our success is the great partnerships that we have created with all the other local community organizations. We're admired by many far and wide in the chamber community because we actually have partnerships with our downtown organization and our city and economic development directors and the park district and library and school. That's a very unique thing to our community and I promise you that we work every day to make sure that that stays intact.
Any questions, Holly? Thank you for the great job you are doing and thank everybody at the chamber for all the support they give our community.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown.
No report, your honor. Just a few meetings to announce. Tomorrow evening is gonna be the continuation of the discussion on the Campana project. The public hearing, I believe, has been closed, so there will be no more comments taken from the public on that through the public hearing process, but the commission is gonna further their conversation tomorrow evening at seven o'clock. The next committee of the whole meeting is Tuesday, the twelfth, at seven thirty and the next historic preservation meeting will be the eleventh, Monday, at five o'clock. That's all I have.
And while you're talking about that, at the next committee of the whole meeting on the twelfth, I'm very honored and pleased to report to you that at five o'clock tonight was the cutoff date for applications for filling Alderman Mueller's vacancy. And we received at the end of the day, four applications from fourth ward residents. Mary, and now I'm gonna butcher these names out, one of these people's gonna be on here pretty quick and say, the mayor doesn't know how to pronounce my name. Mary Turanati, Turanati, at three twenty-eight Hamlet Street. Joe Canop at five eleven Oger Drive. Harold Lamonte at eight twenty-two Hamlet Street. And Anthony Malley at three hundred Oger Drive. Those are the four that we have. So, we've obviously invited them all to come at the committee of the whole on the twelfth and given that there's four and, you know, there's probably some things we can talk about, I would think that this could take, you know, an hour, an hour and a half of our time. And as we have done previously, after you guys get through interviewing them, we will adjourn to executive session for a couple of minutes and we'll hand out the ballots. And the way we select them is the one you like the best, we give a four-two, and the one you like second, you give a three-two. And then we add up your collective numbers and that's who the person is that gets selected. So, the thirteen of you will make the decision as to who this person's going to be. And it's, we've done this now for a number of years and it's, I feel it's worked extremely well. You know, you're being selected by the people you're gonna come in here and work with. It's worked extremely effective as far as, I think, you know, somebody hitting the ground running and they know that, you know, they were chosen by the council to be the person. So, the decision's with the city council. This, I have to admit to you, this is a little bit unique that we do it like this. I've had several other cities and newspapers from other parts of the region call me and ask me, do we do this like this in Batavia? And I say, yes. And they say, well, in our town, the mayor says, this is who it's gonna be, end of story. And I said, well, I've never done it like that and I think this is a much better way of doing it. So, this is kinda the best way we can get democracy in action, you know, without going out and trying to have an election, which the state of Illinois wouldn't let us do anyway. So, this, I think, works very well. So, I appreciate the good efforts, but the twelfth will be the big night when the decision will be made. So, Laura and I have had a discussion today about that because she had some other ideas of some stuff that maybe she wanted to bring onto that agenda and I'm not sure anything that's complicated is going to be easily accommodated when you've got this as the first thing on the agenda, so.
That's what I was gonna ask, your honor. With that being on the agenda, like you say, it could take an hour and a half.
Right.
Is there much else on the agenda? Should we start the meeting at seven next Tuesday night or are we okay with seven thirty still?
I would just like to point out that there are a number of very large items on agendas in September and we're trying to kind of pace ourselves so as not to have, you know, any three-hour meetings, so to try to take them in a couple of hour chunks. We've got the pedestrian crossings on thirty-one to discuss. We have the bike path through the wastewater treatment plant. The Plan Commission will likely be rendering their decision about the Campana project as well as HPC on that next Monday. So, we've got a big challenge when it comes to our committee of the whole agendas. So, with that being said, I know that on the twelfth, we do wanna do this interview process. Do we just want to do that, that night and allow the individual who is selected then to get up to speed prior to the next committee of the whole meeting?
Oh, I would, I mean, this has happened quite often and I would say no to that question. If there's something that needs to come in front of the committee of the whole, we should bring it in front of the committee.
Okay.
But if it's gonna be a timely discussion, then we should start at seven. I don't know what you've got coming up, four next Tuesdays meeting? Should we start at seven or seven thirty?
We could start at seven, given the number of things on the agenda. I think that probably would be a good idea.
I would just make the observation, I think there's enough things in the Campana discussion that I don't know if I think this council's gonna be ready to vote on that this month.
I would agree with that, sure.
I anticipate that you're gonna need perhaps more than one meeting for Campana, given that there are probably gonna be a number of people, even though they presented their opinion to the Plan Commission, are also going to wanna present those same opinions to you prior to you making the decision.
That's what I'm saying, you know, there's some other ideas and strategies I've heard that I'll let you know when I think I know enough about them to share, but I just think this is a very complex issue and is not easily going to be resolved in, you know, by the end of this month. I don't think that's in the cards.
Well, let's plan on this coming call meeting to be at seven o'clock and if we don't have one of those long item agendas, items, we'll get out a little bit earlier on Tuesday night.
Worse things could happen.
We'll start at seven o'clock on Tuesday.
And we'll just do the Alderman then, is that what you're saying?
Well, we'll do the Alderman and if she's got something else ready for us other than the Campana project, that could probably take quite some time.
Batavia Avenue.
Crossings.
Crossings could be.
One of them. That could be one. We could get that one done, probably.
You know, the sewer plant bike trail idea. I mean, there's a lot of good stuff that needs action. I'm not saying we don't do anything else, but I just see that Campana thing being a long drawn out legally enticed discussion that will be probably challenged and re-challenged and.
Yeah.
So, I don't know whether you're gonna get anything easily.
Well, why don't we see if we can get either the bicycle path or the crossings?
I think perhaps both of those items could be on the same agenda because there's a lot of crossover of people who are interested in those two topics because it's talking about being a bike-friendly, pedestrian-friendly community.
Anybody else, anybody want to throw anything in? So, that's what we're gonna do then, you?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock on the twelfth. All right. Next committee, Alderman Atak, Government Services.
I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, City Services.
I don't know what we have on the next committee of the whole. Just wanna remind everybody that's watched the brush pickup times and make sure that as we get into the, into the fall here, that you get ready for leaves and everything else that's coming up for the fall season. That's it.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien.
I have nothing, your honor.
Okay.
You skipped Laura.
Oh, I'm sorry. Laura, I skipped you.
You wanna know about those brush pickup dates? September eleventh is the east side brush pickup date and September eighteenth is the west side brush pickup date. And again, you're gonna wanna have those items out by the curb by seven o'clock AM on the Monday of that week. There are a number of different public works projects going on around town that I'll bet people are seeing and are curious about, so I'll just mention some of those. Progress on the street resurfacing program is continuing. The concrete work and milling have been completed on the east side of town and final paving is expected to begin currently. Paving will continue on the east side through this week and then concrete work and pavement milling will begin on the west side of town this week and it's estimated that all work will be completed by the end of September. There's a pre-construction meeting for the annual crack fill project that was held last week and work on that project is beginning this week. And, you know, doing the crack filling, perhaps it's not the most aesthetically pleasing thing to see those, you know, snaking lines on the street, but it really does help the city to save money and extend the lifespan of the pavement. So, crews will be working on that throughout September. Also, the roadway and municipal parking lot patching program has begun. It was a project that Rahat Bari headed up to take an inventory of all of the public parking spaces throughout the city and to put them on a schedule for regular maintenance and repair. We are out to bid on the Area Three Storm Sewer Outfall Project and the first, this the first project that's going to occur in Area Three and it'll provide the new outfall pipe that goes into the river. We have to start at that point and then work our way westward to those homes that we are trying to relieve the issue of the combined sewer. Replacement of the mock-up window in the Alderman's room is scheduled for next Monday and underground electric work in the north parking lot of City Hall is underway. If anybody parked there tonight and wonders why there's a diagonal cut in that parking lot, we are improving the electric service in that parking lot. It's the final stage of our City Hall security improvements. Quotes for repairs on the portion of the food pantry roof have been received and the roof repairs will be done prior to the onset of winter. And also, right across from us here outside the Peg Bon Center and then part of the parking lot, the joint park district and city electric project in the West City Hall parking lot is ongoing and the purpose of that is to provide outlets for food trucks and other things needing electric service during our various city festivals. And the, I wanted to give you an update on One Washington Place, that the contract has been suspended for the winter as far as demolition of the parking garage and parking lot goes. And so, but the fencing around that will be removed and the disturbed landscape areas will be stabilized prior to the onset of winter. We're continuing doing the smoke testing of the sewers around town. There doesn't seem to be the same, the information seems to have been provided sufficiently that people understand what that smoke testing is now and they're not calling the fire department when it happens and so that's progressing well. We also are continuing the overhead electric replacement work that's going on in Colonial Village and also the project over at the wastewater treatment plant is now back on schedule and the contractor has been able to recover from that extensive rainfall that we had that had previously put them behind. If you traveled Wilson Street today, you'll notice that there are finally some positive improvements at that old marathon station, that the canopy came down and they also began demolition work on the store part as well. Expect them to complete that this week and then they will be restoring it to, with soil and grass prior to the end of the season. Also, permit applications have been submitted for the industrial building expansion at two hundred and eighty Bellevue, which is advanced disposal CNG fueling improvements. And also, there's a new development submittal for the Prairie Commons property at Kirk Road and Winter Energy Pass. So, we should be reviewing that and bringing that soon. And the only other thing that I'd like to mention is that I handed out to you at the beginning of the meeting, a packet that contains the executive, the closed session meetings for Committee of the Whole for two thousand and seventeen. If everybody could check in their folder that the top sheet says minutes July twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. for all of you to review and provide any corrections, and if no corrections are necessary, to approve those minutes. Does anyone have any questions for me? Mike?
Alderman Earl, I'll start with you.
Um, with One Washington Place, can we start that sooner than later, just 'cause it's, I mean, you say by winter, but it's gonna be an eyesore for the next several months if we don't do it. Sooner than later.
I'll have Gary respond to that.
We are currently securing quotes for the fencing and landscaping, so both of those will be done as soon as we get the quotes.
Yes.
Try and come to you for approval.
Alderman Meitzler?
All right, that's her.
Two questions, actually. Do we have any update on Siemens' timeline? The Siemens lot off of McKee.
I wish that Scott Buning was here to respond to that question. I, I do not have a definitive answer for you. Of course, initially, they had said that they were going to be done with that prior to the beginning of the school year, but that has since passed by more than a week, and so I'll provide you an updated answer to that question.
That'd be great. And then the other question I had was about the rebranding effort. Is there any update on what's going on there?
Um, yes, we are going to have a conversation with them this week, and in particular note that they had mentioned that they were going to contact the Alderman as part of their process. We would like them to engage in that process at that, this point, prior to reaching a conclusion of their project. So there will be a period of time where we'll make an effort to have all of them contact you, and, um, and then the next part will be when they bring a final product back to present to City Council. At the same time, we have the strategic planning, that we have narrowed the selection process down. There has been in, internal discussion about the relationship between branding and the strategic planning process, and so I would look to have a conversation with all of you about that. I just, you know, there's so many things that we have on our plate to discuss in September, but I do think that that would be worthy of a fifteen-minute discussion to understand how those two projects, how, how they're related to one another.
Alderman Gellin?
Mine's related to One North Washington. Can you get us the timeline as to the redevelopment agreement as it, and obviously not tonight, if you don't have those dates, but how it's going to affect any repayment of, of any bonds issued as the talk, the clock is ticking on the TIF, and when any cutoffs would have to occur for any of those off-ramps? Some of the concerns out there are this sits for years while we're, people believe that we're just waiting for decisions to be made on it, but we have a redevelopment agreement, and we should have those dates out there so that we know when the, when the pullback is going to be on some of these, on some of these things, to make sure, like we've always said, that this project pays for itself.
Absolutely. You know, I, I wanna let you know that Shodin and the city's parking construction consultants, as well as representatives from the city, met last Thursday to discuss the issue about the fact that the bids for construction on the project came in significantly higher than when they were budgeted for back in 2015, when the first pro forma was done. And so, at this point, what we have requested from the developer is a revised pro forma, and one of the things that they are looking at in terms of that, the, the costs coming in higher are ways to address that problem, you know, whether they be through changes to the project itself. So know that there are multiple conversations per week that are happening between city staff and the developer to try to determine what a potential set of alternatives to the situation might be. At the same time, your concerns with regard to the deadlines that are in the redevelopment agreement, I can tell you that we have reached substantial agreement on some of the most important terms that we were looking at as, as part of that agreement. Both parties, the city and the developer, are very interested in moving forward with construction of this project as soon as possible. It's something that's gonna be very positive for the city, and it's gonna be very positive for the developers, so there's no motivation to delay on either part. But I'd be happy to provide you with that information and get that out there in the public, too, so that they can feel secure that we're doing everything necessary to reduce our risk.
When you say landscape, Gary, you're talking either sod or a seed and blanket?
Where are you, seed and blanket?
Okay. And then, second question is, with the resurfacing program, are we gonna continue just to overlay the gutter?
That would be a policy discussion to come back to City Council. Right now, City Council's direction to staff, we brought to you back in 2014 or 2015, is due to budgetary constraints that those streets were previously overlaid, we just resurface and re-overlay them, so yes.
But you understand my concerns.
Understood.
I do, and I guess that was last year, and we haven't had that issue at all this year in any of our, in any of our roadways, and we know that concern and won't have that issue going forward, so I guess I don't, if we wanna bring it back as a policy discussion, we can, but that, that was something that happened last year and not this year.
I, I might, I'll, I'll think about that. I just have concern, I'm gonna, I'll say it one more time, I mean, I, I just, I'm disappointed that what's going on on the east side with, with storm sewers is, is not adequate, and we've had this discussion. I just don't think it's adequate for where we're heading, and I guess, you know, if you look at what's going on in Houston, I mean, a lot of those issues that they're having there is planning, is, is lack of planning, and, and, and I don't wanna be a victim of that. And so, that, that, that's my concern, is that we fully address the hundred-year storm is coming yearly now, it appears, and so I think it's only gonna get worse, and I say it all the time, and I just wanna make everyone aware that it's something we should be addressing.
It will definitely be an important discussion that we have as part of our budget process when we talk about allocation for storm sewer.
Okay.
Alderman Savad, you got anything?
No.
Alderman Wolf?
No.
Janzit? Susan?
Nope.
Alderman Stern?
ATEC?
No. Alderman Brown? Yeah, I wanna piggyback on a couple of things. One is the branding, um, situation that we got going on here. I can't remember, I, I think we were, they under contract for like eighteen thousand or something like that?
I think the complete project is twenty or twenty-five.
Um, do you know off the top of your head, or maybe you could get us the answer for tomorrow evening's meeting, or no, it's next Tuesday, how much we've paid them? I guess my point is...
Thirty-three hundred dollars so far.
Thirty-three hundred, okay. My, my point is, I would wanna make sure that we don't pay them anything further until we see what we were told we were gonna see.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes.
And then the other thing is, to piggyback on the One North Washington, I really feel as though it's really important, Laura, that, I don't know if it'd be you or you and a combination of staff who's been sitting in on these meetings, to sit down with the Committee of the Whole and explain to us in detail everything that's going on and some of the conversations that have been happening about what the city's thinking may be a good idea and what the developer's thinking may be a good idea, because as we've talked before, I hate to see you and the city staff go through a lot of exercise and try to work something out when maybe the consensus by the council might be something completely different than what you're thinking.
I agree with you, and it's, it's exactly what we discussed following the last One Washington Place meeting, that it probably, the best thing would be for all of you to have a discussion with the developer, as well as staff, all of us together, to take a look at those potential options and decide together what would be the best.
Well, I'm not even saying that I want the developer in on the first meeting anyway. I think we should be more informed on what the discussions are between you and the developer.
The, the various options, that, that's a meeting that really just happened last Thursday, so, but I would be happy to provide some more detail on what type of options were discussed. But prior to now, we only knew from the developer that there was this issue, that the costs were too much, and they were trying to look for ways to reduce those.
It just seems like it's a, it's a moving target, and I understand it is. I mean, I'm in the industry, things don't happen as fast as you think they're going to, ever. But there had been some conversation about continuing the obligations that the city had, so there is no off-ramp, such as the demolition of the remaining parking garage and environmental clearing and everything, and that really was the last conversation that we had here, kinda informally even. And then we get notification that the contract's been canceled with the demolition contractor, that we're not gonna proceed with the demolition. So to me, that was a little bit upsetting, that, and informally, we, we had that discussion, never formally, but certainly never formally did we have the discussion about should we cancel the contract with, for the demolition. So I don't really like the way that went. It's gone that way, I know I could've picked up the phone and called, but I've been kinda just sitting back here on some of these things and waiting and seeing to see what goes on.
Okay.
Um, but I just, I, I just feel pretty strongly that we're, we're not getting the information we should be getting before some of these decisions are be made.
All right.
And I, and I'm not saying we wanna micromanage, but we should know what's going on.
And it's tough when we see each other once per week, too, all together like this, but I'll, I'll try to do better.
And if I can just jump in, too, we have now canceled the contract, our contractor's just on hold, so he's agreed to hold the prices even into 2018.
Yeah, right, you're, yeah, I apologize, that's what you did send out in the mail, yeah. But, but the decision was made not to proceed with the demolition at this time.
Sure.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
You guys have anything? Uh, before we let Laura sit down, I just wanna share, it was, a mention was made about the, that we've accepted a plan idea for property out at the corner of Kirk Road and Wind Energy. I think we're, are we calling that Prairie Commons, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Those names change, and I'm not, you know, I've seen several names on that property, and nothing's ever been built there, so I'm hesitant to use the name. Well, as all of us in this room who are here will remember, the last time this, that property came up for discussion, it became highly controversial, and there was all these charges that somebody was down here approving something that hadn't been approved, and all this other happy stuff. Uh, I just wanted very clear that this time around, this is not an industrial warehouse or anything that these folks, I think we're back in compliance with the plan for the area. This is a residential subdivision of a combination of both single-family and attached townhouses, I think is what we're getting there. And then, then on the corner, there is going to be, I think it's eight acres, eight or nine acres of commercial zoning to ma, to kinda mirror the existing commercial zoning that's already in place on the other side of the street. So I just wanna put that out there publicly for people to see on TV or read in the newspaper or whatever's gonna happen here, that this is what the plan is, and as I had to explain to a number of people the last time, when a developer shows up to the city and says, "Here's my project," you know, we have to at least give it a public hearing, and the City Council and the staff have to talk to them and talk about what we can and cannot do, and where the utilities are, and where the traffic numbers are, and what the neighbors are, or where they're located at. There's a lot of moving parts to something like this, and this is not something that we in any way, shape, or form take lightly, but we, we just can't, I've had people last time said, "Well, you should've just said, 'Go away.'" And you just can't do that. I mean, they have every democratic right to come in here and ask that we consider whatever it is they wanna do there. I would suggest that probably this one is going to be more widely received with more friendly reception, that this isn't some wild idea of changing the plan out there and doing something different, that it's kind of what you got across the street will be brought over and put on the east side of, of Kirk Road there. So this has been around a while. These folks have been in here for a year and a half, probably, two years, talking about this, and I think there's been several renditions of their plans, and they've all been kinda the same, the commercial on the corner, and then some type of housing around the back in there, going out to the water tower and all that good stuff that's there. And then, of course, coming up to our neighbors in Aurora, right out there in Savannah, they, they would back up right to the backyards of those folks, so, uh, an interesting discussion, I think, when maybe in, in, had, are we gonna connect this subdivision with Savannah? I don't think it's a bad idea, but we'll see where we go with that one. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've been through committee reports, I've already jumped over on that one. Uh, we have other business. Anybody on the council have any other business? All right, moving then to the mayor's report, and I got two things I'd like to say. First of all, I have a lot of people either send me an email or stop in or whatever and say that they would like to find some reason to get involved in Batavia, you know, not as an elected official, but just as a volunteer or a helper to help out doing something. And then we have some organizations that come in here and say, "Gee, would you like, be nice to have a few more hands to help us plant flowers into up here at the Round River Rain?" I mean, there's a lot of different ideas floating around. So what I'm gonna propose is, is that probably in the second week in November, which I'm looking at November the eighth, which I don't think is, I don't think it's a planned, at least it isn't at the moment, scheduled as a Plan Commission or anything else, but I'd like to have a, I wanna call it the Community Volunteer Solicitation Night, in which I'm gonna specifically invite the Fourth of July fireworks people down and the toy drive people down, the Christmas toy drive people. And I'm at, gonna ask both of them if they'll put on a five or ten minute little presentation about what it is and what they do. And I wanna do that specifically because both of those organizations have told me that they could use a few new fresh hands on the, on the table, and, you know, they need a little help. And both of those, there's fundraising, there's, you know, getting together people to run parking lots on Fourth of July, there's a lot of new moving parts of that, and it's just, both of them, I think, you cannot argue, they're community institutions, we've done them every year, we're unique in the fact that we do those two events, and they are widely received by the community, especially the fireworks, it's the biggest event that we host every year as far as attendees. And so I just think that there is a chance there that we could pick up a few more talented individuals who could go and help in a variety of tasks on both fronts. And in some instances, if you're really ambitious, you could come and be part of both of them, 'cause one's in the middle of the year and one's at the end of the year. And if you wanna, you wanna enjoy some, some nice feelings, I would invite any of them to come and volunteer, and then come to the toy drive on the day when we hand out the toys and see the reception that that's given by the people who receive those toys. So then I'm thinking, maybe I wanna expand this a little bit, and if any, I'm just sharing this with you. Number one, if any of you know of anybody in your ward that has said, "Gee, I'd like to get a little bit more involved," tell them that we're planning to do this. Now, this, this night may still, date, the actual date may get moved a couple days one way or another, but the plan is to do it at that time, so that we can maybe get a few people interested in joining right away into the toy program, and maybe the rest, but if, and then I'm gonna put the word out to other few organizations in town that have some good ideas, and see if any of them would like to come and set up a table or talk for a little bit about what it is that they do. And I'm just trying to build some community participation and volunteerism in this town, which has always been there, it's been the, kind of, the saving grace of Batavia for, for many years, and I just think that we have a rare opportunity. I've, I can think of some people that have told me, you know, "I really like to do something, but I don't know what it is I'd like to do," that we can maybe farm some of these people out of the neighborhoods and bring them in here and say, "Well, would you be willing to help with the, some of these good projects in the community?" And let's see where we go with it. 'Cause right now, I, I would tell you that both the toy drive and the fireworks could use a few new, new hands. They've got some great people running them, but they're, they're overworked, in my opinion, for what they have to do, and we need to let some new blood and bring in some new ideas and just see where we go with this. So again, if you know of anybody in your wards, I would just like to invite you to come in. The other thing I would like to just share is an observation as the mayor, that I've, I've had the opportunity, as most of you know, I try to be some... had the opportunity, as most of you know, I try to be somewhat visible in town, so I make an effort on Saturday morning, if I'm around, to get down and walk through the farmer's market. And I certainly try to, you know, attend to all the various activities that we have here. And this particular summer, I have been overwhelmed by, I will describe it as admiration and compliments, not toward the mayor, but toward the city government and some of the things that this council and those who preceded us have done in the downtown area of Batavia specifically. And I'll start with, you know, certainly Windmill City days, when we had the new Houston Street to work on and they had some new ideas on that. And just the way the whole thing was run and managed and the bands and activities and the fact that we pulled it off and there wasn't any big police actions and we didn't have a whole bunch of people get arrested or it wasn't overly loud. But then, the compliments come for all the stuff that we've done here, from Houston Street to River Street to the bridge, to rebuilding the downtowns, the plantings and the landscaping and the flowers on Wilson Street. It's all getting pretty high marks and rave reviews for people. And there's a couple of you sitting here who were here with me when, specifically when we started talking about River Street. And I would describe some of those meetings as close to doom and gloom, as some people said, oh, this is too expensive, this is never going to work, nobody's ever going to use it. And, you know, I look back now and for whatever political battle scars three or four of you here wear, I mean, you really look good now for what, you look at the size of the crowds that we had down here on Sunday night for this Labor Day thing between the car show and the party over here behind us, it was one of the bigger crowds I've ever seen in downtown Batavia. And it was great to see. And, you know, the fact that you got everybody right down in the middle of the town here and they come from the east side and the west side and from other communities, I think it speaks well to what we're all about and what we're trying to do to create a sense of community and understanding and friendship, and it's just good stuff. So, you know, I took with great admiration as I stood here on Sunday night and I looked at that car show over on half of Larson and Becker and the other half of it being used as a public parking lot and there wasn't a space left in it to park. And I remember when, I'll give Bill McGrath the credit for putting the deal together for to buy Larson and Becker. And, you know, there were some eyebrows raised on that. Is this, should the city be doing this? Is this a good idea? And, you know, I think now, most people think, well, you know, it may be a parking lot today and three or four years from now, it could be something else in the parking lot, could be across the street or whatever's going to happen there. But we now are in command of that area there and I think we're doing the right stuff with it. And so, we've made some right decisions here and despite all the negative things you hear about government and the things people don't like, there's been some very positive moments here. And all of you should sit here and take a degree of credit for what's been accomplished here because without, excuse me, without your support and encouragement, a lot of this wouldn't have happened. But you only have to be in downtown Batavia today at some of these events, and we're going to have another one here in a few weeks at the Oktoberfest. And if the weather's good, I think that could be a real slam dunk as far as the number of people attending. Talking to the guys that were out here with the food booths on Sunday night, many of them ran out of food, just flat ran out, and they brought much more food than they did a year ago, but they, again, they ran out because there was just so much participation here. So, I even had the manager at McDonald's tell me last night that I, he was scolding me that I didn't tell him how big a crowd that was going to be because he understaffed himself and he got slammed for there was so much business, even in his place, and he wasn't part of the event, but he had all the overflow crowd. So, you know, it's good to hear stuff like that, that they're all happy about the volume of business, but the fact that we are making downtown Batavia a real central point of the community for people to use and enjoy and its settings of history. And I'm glad we're going to have another conversation about Batavia Avenue because it's obvious we have a lot of people from that side that want to walk down here and we need to try to make that as safe as we possibly can for them. Probably it's got the same thing over on Route 25 on the east side that maybe to a lesser degree, but they're coming in here like crazy to come into this community and be part of it. So, it's all good stuff. I guess we haven't done everything bad here because we certainly are getting the people coming in for our events unlike we've never seen before. Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just speaking of, you brought up Batavia Avenue and with as much as we got coming up on the agendas and everything, but winter's coming, if we're going to do another walk around town, we probably ought to get her scheduled here pretty soon because winter's going to be here and then we won't be walking around town and conversations will get delayed.
We got to get a couple of store windows finished because we're all supposed to go and have our picture taken beneath those windows. And what I'm talking about is, Alvin Brown's aware of this, El Taco Grande has gone and put new windows in their second floor, spent a lot of money. So, when we take our next walk, he wants us to come over there and see him and show us the windows and then he wants to stand with us, I guess, underneath the windows and have his picture taken with the City Council, who were supportive of his ideas of putting those, doing all that work on the building.
Right. I think his idea there is he wants to have some documentation of history of the year that he put these windows in. He's been working on doing it for many years.
Right.
And it's a very historic building and so, he's very proud of doing it. So, he wants to have a picture documentation of this being done.
So, if we do the next night, dress nicely because you're going to have your picture taken and it's probably going to be blown up huge on the wall in El Taco Grande for everybody to see. All right?
There was something else, but I just lost my mind right now, so.
All right, well, that should be enough for the night. Alvin Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move adjourn.
So, move, second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.